Good evening, everyone. I have seven o'clock. I'll call a meeting to order and I'll call the role. Means our city clerk is tied up with another project right now. Craig David.
Present.
Dr. Joe Schroder.
Here.
Justin Smith.
Here.
John Welch.
Present.
And Diane Nguyen is absent. Okay. This evening, we have John Barquette, retired pastor and Bel Air resident, to lead us in prayer. Is it Dr. Barquette? Or is it just John?
Pardon?
Is it Dr. Barquette or just John?
Just John. I got two masters but no doctorate.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Let us pray. How long will God is the foe to scoff? Is the enemy to revile your name forever? Why do you hold back your hand? Why do you keep your hand in your bosom? As we come before you in prayer, we share the frustrations and anger of the psalmist when your temple was destroyed. We watch an atrocity happening in Ukraine and we feel powerless as we watch the destruction of innocent lives and cities. Like the psalmist, we plead for you to act and on your behalf, that we as your children act to help save the lives of the innocent and stop this needless debacle. May we walk with those who mourn, be they the innocent Ukrainians of all ages or the Russian mothers who will mourn the loss of their sons ordered to suffer this aggression, that they may all be comforted. We pray for peace and restoration for the Ukrainian nation and justice for those who commit this evil. Give wisdom and discernment to our national leaders and to the leaders of all peace-loving nations, that peace may come. May you guide our local leaders who meet this night to serve the common good within their jurisdiction and beyond. Protect those who live and work in our fair city. Remember those who protect the common good, guiding and protecting them. Grant us all the strength to work for peace, for blessed are the peacemakers. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Item five is to determine agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions to consider? Here now, I'll move on to item six, which is the consent agenda. It contains only the minutes of March 1st, regular council meeting. Any discussion or motion? Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David to approve. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item seven, discussion approval of appropriation ordinance. So, the ordinance 2205 is in the amount of $593,153. This reporting period is more typical, includes bond capital projects in the amount of $292,516. Is there any discussion or motion for the appropriation ordinance? You can pay a motion if there is one. Mr. David.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to accept the appropriations ordinance 22-05.
I will second.
Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. We have no city requests of appearances this evening. Are there any citizens' concerns? Mr. Repke. Please state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Repke. I live at 4300 North Rushwood Circle. I've got some questions about Bel Air's policies, regulations about open spaces and protecting our canopy trees in new developments. Are there any regulations requiring a certain percentage of open spaces and protecting those existing trees? Look up there at 53rd and Roth, there's some big old trees that have been there for a very long time. I'd hate to see those get knocked down for some shopping area or residential development. I looked back through some old minutes, found a few things. This was December 7th, '04, ordinance 418. Says under planned unit development final checklist, evidence of the establishment of the agency for the ownership and maintenance of common open spaces. September 2014 subdivision regulations, chapter 18, part B, paragraph N, ordinance 549. In subdividing an existing plat, due consideration should be given by the subdivider to the dedication or reservation of suitable sites for schools, parks, playgrounds, or other public recreational areas of open spaces. And this came from December 1997. This was under the Bel Air Comprehensive Development Plan update 2014 through 34. Smart growth is desperately needed to affect today's tragedy. The random scattering of disconnected estate developments with no thought to what they mean for the environment or of the land use plan is to human community. So again, I'm just kind of wondering what, if any, regulations we have as far as these existing trees, the ones that have been around for 100 years or more versus the ones that get planted in new developments that are just, you know, sticks. Be 30, 40 years before they're really effective and do anything.
Good. Thank you. I do believe our planning commission looks at these things, but defer to others who know more about that than I do.
So, planning commission does look at the character of the neighborhood and what established screening measures developers can and should take just depending on the features of the existing environment and what is going into the area. So, they do put some weight into that, but chiefly, the main kind of control that the city would have on that would be in a comprehensive plan. And as that's updated in the year or in the next couple of years, addressing green space would be kind of a controlling, that would be a controlling document for prioritizing money, budget, action towards green space and also the master growth plan. And another document that kind of drives how the city wants to grow and what percentage of what kind of space the city would want. Those are documents that, you know, legally have to be reviewed and adopted by the council, so that is a really good measure for doing that. Council could also adopt a resolution to have a certain amount of green space or just have flexibility to make law related to that. But it really is designed to flow from your controlling documents, your comp plan, your master growth plan and such.
Thank you. We do have a master growth plan, but we have not reviewed it in a few years. Is that correct?
I think it's 2014 or 2018 was the last time we did that.
Yeah. Very good. So, thank you for the input and I think we need to give that some consideration because I, I'm not aware that we have not, but we should ask the question. So, thank you. Moving on, we'll go to council member reports. Mr. Welch.
I'm sorry. I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I have no report this evening.
Mr. David.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Schroder.
I have no report.
Move on to mayor's report. So, on Saturday, March 12th, I attended the Sudbury County Association of Cities in Valley Center. While Sudbury County cities are members, all Sudbury County cities are members. All mayors and city council members are invited to attend these meetings. This is the first one and anyone could remember where 10 of the local mayors attended. So, two main issues were discussed. The need for a local state-run mental health hospital and Sudbury County EMS. So, we will consider a resolution to go to the state legislature later in the meeting. That resolution is encouraging the legislature in Topeka to get a 50-bed state mental hospital in our region. Kansas recognizes that we are short about 200 beds in the state, so 50 beds in our region would help address that demand. So, Sudbury County Sheriff Jeff Easter has estimated about 25% of his jail population does not belong there, but they cannot be released because they have nowhere to go for follow-up treatment. This hospital would help address that issue. Estimates are, estimates are that the last several years, the county has spent some $17 million treating or re-treating and arresting about 500 people who fall into this category. And some of those are probably the same people over and over, but you know, the way the data is pulled together, we don't really know. If managed correctly, this hospital could reduce the civicism, saving taxpayers dollars. 10 cities represented as the S C A C, there was unanimous agreement to rally the legislators on this issue. This is an issue the legislators are working on this very week, so time is of essence. The resolution will consider, was drafted by Laura Rainwater and updated by Pete Meichner. The others would get the basics down and has been customized for Bel Air, I think, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We also heard a presentation from Paul Miazzi, who is the deputy director of operations at Sudbury County EMS. So, so quick statistics about EMS. In 2021, EMS handled 69,000 calls, the most in its history since 1975 when it was created. About 55% of those are life-at-risk calls using lights and sirens, saving about one and a half minutes to the hospital. So, they're only used for top priority calls. 85% of calls are from Wichita. 0.84% of the calls are from Bel Air. EMS service is about 1,000 square miles. They have 20 ambulances to cover that area. At any given point in time, six to eight of those ambulances are available for the next call as the others are already addressing a call. On occasion, they have to pull an ambulance out of service due to lack of staffing. Most calls take seven and a half minutes or less as a response time, but 90% of all calls have a 12-minute or less response time. A data dashboard is coming, so that will be posted on Sudbury County website, that all will be able to see this data and more statistics as well. So, I now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of bills that I wanted to let council know about. There is one that was heard yesterday on Protect Home Based Work Act. That's Senate Bill 505. And it seems to preempt cities' abilities to control zoning. And so, the League of Cities is opposed to that. You might remember, a couple of years ago, this council decided to remove some of the barriers and limitations to having a home-based business. While this statewide legislation would further remove some of those barriers in as far as it would allow a home-based business to operate any hours of the day, have unlimited number of employees coming in and out and have an accessory structure on property. That raises some concerns because cities prefer to be able to use the zoning code and council and planning commission to manage how those home-based businesses are run. So, it's early, but this is one that's of particular interest as it relates to local zoning. And I know this council actually addressed that a couple of years ago. Another bill that REAP asked us to weigh in on was the groundwater management district issue. That one has to do with basically entities, including cities and other economic development entities, are concerned that groundwater management districts control any city's ability to use water rights, use our water rights because it has to be approved through this board. And the cities don't have much say with the way the board is structured. So, the legislative movement is to balance some of that control, so that way Wichita, Bel Air, other cities and other economic entities could plan for reliably how we will use our water rights as opposed to having this independent group decide that. And it's kind of taking off, so we're watching that one and have supported REAP's comments on that. Just locally, we have backflow letters going out this week. City staff has requested some amendments to the language. It sat on the shelf for a year and a half because we didn't enforce last year. Now, they're wanting a bit more clarity in some of the language. So, likely we'll bring that to the council recommending ordinance revision just for clarity. And the county did, this council requested some changes to the senior agreement with the county. And the county did call and say that we were going to be the one city to receive an exception to that gifting requirement. And we would need to make sure we got back with them next year. So, wanted to tell you that as well.
Very good. Do you have the bill number on the home-based business issue?
Yes. It is Senate Bill 505. And then, the groundwater management bills are Senate Bill 548 and Senate Bill 549.
Was Kansas League of Municipalities in favor of the groundwater management bills?
Yes. They're supporting that.
Okay. Because I know I've heard some discussion about those things in other venues, CCU A and such, and I didn't know that there was a concern there, but okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let our citizens know, if they haven't already heard, that April 9th is the spring festival. So, that's a few weeks away. It's going to be at the rec center, one to three. Again, Easter egg hunt and some other activities will be going on, but that's always a fun event in the spring. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I think it was a meeting or two ago, I had had talked about waste connections with changing their routes for maybe 1,300 customers. They've got that finalized and it affects everybody. Everybody other than a couple of blocks by the high school. So, we haven't been involved in those discussions. Obviously, that's their choice of the way that they're going to pick up trash and recycling, but for whatever reason, they're changing. Basically, everybody's trash days will change and recycling will change weeks. And so, what's, and this will be rolled out, the end of March is when this will take place. So, the issue that we're going to have is on recycling. It'll be, instead of a two-week pickup, it'll be three weeks because they're moving it a week. They've, in some of the conversations we've had and questions we've been asking, they mentioned that they might allow some extra bags, so knowing that people will have three weeks instead of two weeks of recycling, that they can bag that up. But they're still working on all the details. They have assured us that they will send out a postcard to every customer explaining the date that that changes for their recycling and their trash pickup. We're trying to, we've worked on a new map. The one that they gave us was a little hard to read, so we're working on a new map to get out to citizens that will show how the days are changing, where you live. And then, they've, I mentioned they have an app that you can download. We've downloaded it and put in the address here at the city, and it really is a good app if you have apps on your phone. I'd encourage everybody to do that because the other benefit that it does is it will remind you when your trash and recycling is. So, just, just to have it, to know that, oh, tomorrow I got to put my trash out, you'll get a notice, or recycling's tomorrow. So, that's kind of a neat, a neat thing that the app does, but that way, they're going to be putting out information based on your address, you know, reminding you that the date will change on your recycling and your trash pickup. Don't know why they're doing it, although we have heard that they're doing the same thing in Park City. So, there's other cities that are feeling our pain as well. So... But like I said, we're going to get all the information we have when we get it finalized from them. And we're getting it out on all of our social media and such, but everybody will get a postcard explaining what their change is.
Thank you, Mayor. Very good. Thank you very much. Move on to item 11. We have a special presentation. Dr. Schroder, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took a job up in the Kansas City area, Palo, Kansas, so I'll be moving. And so, this will be my last official council meeting. I am very sad about moving. I have a lot of friends here. Not just enjoy the city council, I've super enjoyed it here, but I have many other friends as well. It's going to be very sad to move, but I'm sure no one else wants to be explanation on why it's probably better for my wife and I to move, but we are moving. I did want to make a comment or two about the city before I go, and I just thought I'd make a comment about some of my past experience and some things that maybe people should think about and consider. When I was in Trinidad, someone there said, "Oh, I saw you got elected to city council and you're in government now up in, you know, the United States." And I said, "Yeah, yeah, yeah. I've been doing that a couple of years." And he goes, "So, so tell me about the corruption," you know. He goes, "So, you know," he's like, "Tell me about, you know, who gets money and, you know, when's the $1,000 handshakes going on?" And so on and so forth. And, you know, he just, he just assumed there were just shady things going on all the time. And, and I was just like, I mean, I could think of mistakes that we've made or something or a bad idea. And obviously, we're human, so it's not like we're perfectly unbiased, but like, to try to even think of how I would do something corrupt, it's like not even worth it. I'm like trying to explain to him, "You realize if I did something like that, I would like probably get caught and then I would like ruin my career and like that wouldn't be really very good. I just can't even, like doing these corrupt things that you think are happening. I just can't, I don't even know how it would get pulled off." And I tried to convince him that these things were happening. And I say that just to like, hopefully, people in Bel Air, you know, appreciate that because I think sometimes when we don't know what's going on and we don't know all the details, sometimes we like to insert corruption into places where it's not. You might be able to insert, "We've made mistakes," sure, we're people, but don't always insert corruption when you don't know what's going on. There's, you know, it's not always there. I don't know how they fixed my car, and I'm guessing my mechanic probably isn't corrupt either. So, I just kind of wanted to make that comment about the past. Have some confidence. Not that we, not that this council or past councils have made mistakes, but there's just not as much funny businesses you think there might be going, and I'm not even sure I would pull it off even if I wanted to. Regarding the future of Bel Air, I think something that'd be really interesting for the very, very big picture to think about is sometimes I think cities accidentally run as Ponzi schemes or they, they're required to grow. So, infrastructure is really, really expensive. I mean, so we just did Woodlawn, $11 million. I mean, it's really expensive. You know, every time you go to Round Row, those pipes are expensive. It costs a ton, a ton of money. And so, as your city grows, every time you put in new development and you get both specials and the taxes, it's very good. We're getting special money and taxes money, and those new roads, we don't have to even maintain because they're brand new. So, we get the money from the taxes to maintain the old roads, the ones that need, the ones that have been there for 10 years or five years that start needing to be maintained. And so, we're taking the money from the current payers who are paying specials and taxes, who don't need any maintenance, to then pay for the previous people whose taxes probably aren't even enough to cover the maintenance of their road. So, as a city grows and grows and grows, what can happen is someday they stop growing and then boom, you can no longer afford to maintain your infrastructure. Your specials end, all the roads in your city and all the infrastructure and all the pumps and all the, you know, the things need to get done, and you're not pulling enough taxes in because you're not continuing to grow. And so, another way to say this and the way I like it better, sometimes cities can be addicted to growth. They have to grow or they cannot afford to keep themselves continuing to be as a beautiful city. And so, the city of Bel Air, you know, we had all this land that we've almost sold all of. That was great. I think we've been a super, super good job. But as we grow, and someday the city will have to decide how big it's going to grow, it's also going to have to figure out whether it can afford to stop growing. And if it's going to afford, if it is going to stop growing and if it's, you know, how is that math going to work out financially? Because houses with very large lots that require a lot of space, you know, it's expensive, they're expensive. You know, the policeman has to drive a little bit further. The fireman has to drive a little bit further. The pipe is longer because the houses are all spread out. You know, you have an apartment, you know, you have one pipe that runs that whole apartment. That apartment's awesome for taxes. And so, if you have all these sprawling suburbs, are we going to be able to afford to be able to stop growing? And maybe we just want to keep growing or we want to not, but I think it's something we're going to have to think about. And it's something that not just this council, because this is going to go well beyond any of our years serving on here, but it's something the city needs to think about as far as being able to handle growth in the future. It's a very, very big picture way of thinking at it. So, I just kind of wanted to have us all think about that a little bit. It's a big picture thing, nothing- So I just kinda wanted to have us all think about that a little bit. It's a big-picture thing, nothing that I would wanna solve tonight or, or, or even the next two years while I was on council necessarily. I mean, I think we had a clear mandate to try to fix certain roads. We had to sell the land. We've been doing the things we wanted to do. But it's just something to think about over the next twenty years of what Bel Air wants to do. So I wanted to make those few comments. Sorry, I, I made my goodbye longer than it probably needed to be, but thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Please join me at the podium. So we have, we have a couple items here we'd like to, to give you as a thank you and party gift. This is a, is this go around the neck? Okay, so. You do this?
Thank you.
Medallion? And, you got it? Okay. And then also. Thanks for your, your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure appreciate your, and I believe you are going to be on the council until April 1st, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Wanna make sure we're clear about that.
Yep.
So now that we know that Dr. Schroeder is leaving us, I am now making a formal announcement that we have a vacancy on the city council. I'm also formally opening the seat up for qualifying residents to apply. This announcement starts the clock on finding a person to replace Dr. Schroeder. The timeline is as follows. Formal application must be sent to me in thirty days. This means anyone who wants to apply needs to have that application to me no later than April 14th, 2022. And this is a quote from our policy, "To qualify for the open nomination, an interested party person must be a resident of the city of Bel Air and send a letter of interest and a resume to the attention of the mayor via email, US mail, or in-person delivery to the city hall. General questions related to the application or qualification process may be addressed to the city clerk. Interested citizens are required to disclose in writing if they have made a mandatory contribution to a governing body member's campaign, including the mayor's during the previous election," so the election of 2021. So that's the end of the quote of the policy. So I request, I am requesting here that the staff please advise, advertise this open city council seat via Bel Air website, social media, and newspapers as may be feasible. The application window closes on April 15th. I will share all applicant information provided with all current council members. The council members are encouraged to visit with each applicant. I, too, will do everything I can to visit with each applicant. We want to fill this vacancy as quickly as possible, but take enough time to make an informed decision. Under our policy, we could select a replacement as early as April 19th. Our policy says we must have a person selected within a hundred and twenty days from today. That is then July 13th. But since July 13th is on a Wednesday this year, our real completion date is July 5th, the first meeting in July. Hopefully, we can make a decision before July 5th. If anyone has any questions regarding this process, please refer those to the city clerk. It is my intention to allow council members to individually provide me with some ranking of applicants to assist in, in the decision-making. I will ask that council members not share those rankings with anyone else, so that there will be no violation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. I will use those rankings to help summarize the general impression of the council to aid in my decision process. Once we have completed this selection, I will reveal only the summary of council members' inputs. Hopefully, this will help expedite our decision to ultimately, to ultimate consensus while being transparent in the process. As intended by our vacancy policy, my nomination decision is an independent one, and I will reserve the right to select a candidate whom I believe to be the best nomination. However, I hope this communication and transparency will lead us through a smooth and judicious selection and quick confirmation by our council. So, moving on. Oh, this is the revised resolution. Okay, yes. So we'll move on to item 12 on the agenda. So item A is Rock Springs Fourth Paving Improvements. So the developer here is ready to begin paving of Rock Springs Fourth. Three contractors submitted bids with Pearson being the low bidder and other than engineers estimate. The cost of improvements for Rock Springs Fourth will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. And city engineer Anne Stevens is here to answer questions.
Anne Stevens? Before questions, I will say that the developer chose to bid only concrete, so that is why you just have the one option in front of you. We have worked with all three contractors submitting bids. They've all been doing very good work in Bel Air, and we have no problems with any of the contractors.
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from Pearson in the amount of seven hundred eleven thousand, six hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty cents for Rock Springs Fourth paving improvements and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroeder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item B is considered purchasing a new pump for the Rock Road lift station. So over the years, staff has pulled pumps to find debris causing wear and damage to existing pumps. We have begun replacing the, the radial pumps with grinder pumps, which has been an improvement and seeing less downtime as well as repairs. We discussed the purchase of our, at our workshop last Tuesday, and is here to explain and the upgrade and answer any questions. And just so citizens know, there really is no such saying as disposable wipes, even though they're advertised that way and labeled that way in the grocery stores. They're, they're not disposable, and this causes lots of problems on these pumps. So this is the reason we have to do this forty thousand dollar investment, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just about to give the same plug. We actually, this weekend, we had both pumps go down in the Harding Street Lift Station. Fortunately, that lift station does have an overflow to Wichita, so we really did not experience downtime with that particular lift station. But it did cost staff time to come out, pull each pump, clean it out, put it back in operation, and so on and so forth. And it was disposable, not disposable wipes that were found clogging the pump. So unlike the Harding Street Lift Station, the Rock Road Lift Station does not have an overflow downtime, truly is downtime. We do have to spend quite a bit more money in fixing Rock Road because we have to get, if there's, if the pump is gonna be out for any particular amount of time, we have to rent a portable pump to come in and pump the sewage into the force main and get it on where it needs to go. Otherwise, we would be backing up people's homes. So that is the main reason why we are asking council tonight to approve a grinder pump for Rock Road. We will keep the existing pump as a spare in case something should happen. We do have a grinder pump in the 53rd Street Lift Station, which was our number one problem. And that has experienced no downtime as far as I'm aware, and it has been working very well.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Stevens? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. David?
I make a motion to accept the vote from JCI in the amount of thirty seven thousand, five hundred and one dollars for a new pump for Rock Road Lift Station. Authorize the mayor to sign all the related documents.
Second. Motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item C is, I did, like I said in my opening comments in the mayor's report, that I did attend the SAK, the SAK meeting on Saturday, and there was unanimous discussion about our unanimous agreement to support this regional hospital. We have a revised resolution in your hands that was just reprinted a little bit ago, just as the meeting started, as previous versions weren't, weren't quite right. This is for a state mental health hospital located in Sedgwick County region, and not necessarily in Sedgwick County itself. That's up to the state to make that decision, where they would wanna locate it. And that's also to clarify some confusion that was with legislatures, because they thought that, there, there were several things they thought, and I won't try to re- reiterate all the things they thought, but there were some conflicting thoughts there that just weren't accurate about what the county or the cities have been advocating. So this is to help clarify that. So if you got any questions or comments, concerns, certainly wanna hear those. Mr. John Barquette, yes, please come to the microphone.
I worked at Larned State Hospital for a year as a chaplain in all the different programs. One of the problems that I noted, I was pastoring Kingman at the time, is that we would often get people from the Wichita area. Now they go to Oscewata me, but either way, you have major distances for people to go, for families to visit, and when they're released, there's a number of transportation issues. I think it'd be a very good idea to have that here. There's not enough support, not enough mental health facilities available for people who can privately pay for their own or have the insurance to cover. This is where these things come in. So I would recommend your supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, could you please just state your name and address?
Oh, John Barquette, 6223 Perryton Street, here in Bel Air.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Schroeder?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm really glad you put this forward. I think that, you know, the little comment on here that at least anecdotally, you know, it says, it talks about the jail capacity being over, and we, it's a humongous problem. Just anecdotally, I have family members that work in jails, and it's just punishing someone with mental health, thinking that's gonna keep them out of the jail the next time is just a complete waste of resources. They're just gonna come back and back and back. It's extremely expensive. My brother-in-law has explained to me in detail how much it costs and so on and so forth, and so we need a better plan, and I, I hope this is it. And not only is it costing society a bunch of money, it's not helping those people either. It's not working for anyone. And so I will still be living in the state of Kansas and certainly wanna see something like this happen. Hope it, hope it is, hope it goes and I hope it works and I hope it helps everybody. So I appreciate you taking the time to put this before us.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, discussion? Mr. Smith?
I was just gonna add to that. I think this is great. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think I was just reading through the resolution, since there were some slight, slight verbiage changes, and I think it's an excellent resolution. I'll make a motion to accept the resolution of support for a state-owned mental health hospital in Sedgwick County, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroeder. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. On to item D. So the Bel Air Public Building Commission owns these lots in Sunflower Commerce Park, which are being held for a new public works facility and leased to the city of Bel Air. Since the land is sitting vacant, the Eintz family would like to cut it for hay. So this farm lease allows lots to be maintained and brings in about two hundred fifty dollars annually. Are there any questions for our city manager?
I'll go ahead and ask.
Go right ahead. Mr. Welch, I'm sorry.
Would it be cheaper for us to mow that rather than let that grass get long and be a potential fire hazard?
Was it cheaper? No, because in this situation, they're paying us, and if we mowed it, we would incur expense. As far as the, 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 the issues with letting it grow tall and then potential for fires and stuff, I will tell you that they actually mow all of the empty lots out there for hay. And the way that this came about is they did that for the city for the past years when we owned the lots. And then, of course, all of them were sold except for these two. And so the, some of them, or most of them have been built on, but the few that are left that do not, have not been built on, they hay those. So I, it's not like we would be the only ones that would be letting it grow. Every vacant lot out there has the tall grass, and then they cut it for hay, usually in June or so. So, so that's the only reason they're out there. They ask if they could hay that as well. We're not using it. Those are the reasons that I gave him a, an agreement for you to consider.
I'm just thinking this is close to buildings is my objection to that. I, I don't mind somebody haying it. I just, especially this year and last year, we've had a lot of wildfires, and somebody steps out the back door and flips a butt out, and the whole neighborhood goes up.
Any other discussion? Mr. Smith?
I appreciate that concern. I'm trying to visualize what it looks like there to try to imagine how close would this really tall grass or hay be to other buildings that are there, if we have any indication of the other property owners that have those buildings might be concerned. And I'm struggling to visualize exactly how close this might be to like next-level hoops and, you know, is our grass the closest to those buildings? Would we actually be changing any risk if we decided to have it mowed instead of hay? I, I, it feels like it's probably fine to me to have it hayed, but I'm just trying to fully process Mr. Welch's concerns.
So, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. So down at the bottom, you see it says Sentry. There's a building there, and they keep that mowed. They've got a parking lot, et cetera, so that, that lots are developed. The, the, on the right side that, that goes along Industry Drive, where it says sold, and that is, is currently open. There's no, there's no construction on that, so they're haying that. The very top one along Industry at 53rd, they are getting ready to develop that. That is the builder that purchased that lot earlier this year, and they're gonna put a couple warehouses up there. Directly to the, that would be the west, where it says the next level hoop, the first one on Toller Drive. That is all open ground, so that's being hayed. And then, as you go north at 53rd and Toller, where it says next level hoop, that's where the actual next level hoops is. So, so really, to the west of this property and to the north, this property are being hayed.
Just, just for clarification, these buildings have a pretty good offset from the property lines on, all, all around them, don't they? I mean, I don't know how much of an offset.
So the only building that would be clo- the only building that would abut these two would be Sentry. And I think there's probably, I'm trying to think, probably thirty feet between the building and the property line is what I'm guessing.
Okay.
I just have experience with a very small patch of grass, making a very hot fire and burning a building down next to it. That was a metal building. And I was the one that put the match to it, because we thought we were smart. There was no wind, and it went up and it created its own wind, and it just.
So you do, but you do have other adjacent properties there that are, are being hayed right now?
Yes, the, where Sentry, that's the only one that's got a building on it.
But these, these lots have been hayed for some time, haven't they? Is that correct? So you just put this agreement together because we've sold so many other?
Yeah, we've, because we've sold all the lots except for these two. Yeah, we've, because we've sold all the lots except for these two, and he was going to be out there haying all those, and he asked what we were going to do with ours. And I said, well, do you want to hay ours too? And he said, yeah. And so that's why I sent him an agreement.
It may be a little bit early for the concern, but.
Oh, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, so I, and looking at this, I I'm not sure that mowing those would meaningfully change the risk since there's others in the area, and it's certainly, I think, a better use of the land, you know, use the land to produce the hay instead of just chopping grass that isn't going to do anybody any good. So I'll be supporting this.
Dr. Schroder.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the farm lease with Eldon and Harris ends for lots six and seven, block B of the Sunflower Commerce Park, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I have two seconds, huh? I'll take Mr. David. A motion by Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. David to approve the farm lease. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay.
I I don't mind the haying, but I I am concerned with fire danger, and like I said, it may be premature, but I'd rather stop early than too late.
Well, I appreciate that. So I have a vote of three to zero and one abstaining. Mr. Welch should be the one abstaining, so motion carries. Is there a need for executive session this evening? No, we'll move on to discussion and future issues. Does anyone have any additional items to discuss or future issues to mention? All right, move on to item 15. Adfirmment.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Welch to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Schroder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. We are adjourned.